Okay, welcome to the San Juan School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 5th, and it is 3:04 PM. We have in attendance board members Ron Nelson, Lucille Cody is on virtually, Colleen Benelli, Nan Barton, and Dawn Moes III. Superintendent Fitzgerald, Business Administrator Jacob Swanson, welcome, and other San Juan School District staff, thank you for joining us. Our first item is to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for August 5th, 2025 board meeting.
And I will second.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll start with the first item, which is... We'll start with the spotlight report.
Okay, I'm excited to share some of the work that we've been doing as we're kicking off the year. And I wonder if you could click on the first attachment. As we've been working with the school district team across the district, we started out with monumental purpose. What is our why, really leaning into why we do what we do? And then we moved to goal setting with aspire higher and really thinking about what are the goals? What data are we looking at to ensure that we are meeting the expectations for our students? And this year, the theme is rock solid. You can see that we've got the twin rocks up there. And we had our leadership days in bluff. This is really about solid best practices and systems. So a lot of the work that we are doing this year, and it kind of has worked out. We've had a lot of change in our district office staff. So really thinking about people moving chairs. Like, how do we improve the systems that we have? How can we take a step back, look at what maybe we should de-implement that's not working as effectively as we would like it to, and really set those systems for better efficiency to support student outcomes? And you can see you also have a copy of the agenda from our leadership days in your folder. We did some great work together. It was a lot of fun, some team building, but we also did some hard work as well. So you can kind of get an overview of what we worked on on those two days. And I just wanted to kick it off for rock solid best practices for the year.
Thank you. Now we get to...
Where was this done at?
Bluff Elementary. It had to go with the twin rocks.
Sorry.
But we relocate by which land feature we have for each year. So it's been kind of fun. So if you see those themes, they align to a part of our community.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Let's move on to the constitutional of office. Let's make this official. For Jacob Swanson, our new business administrator.
Do you want me to come up there? Okay.
All right. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the San Juan School District data report, 2024 and 20 to 2025, and early learning plan 2025 to 2026. So Paul Murdock, you're taking that on today?
Yes.
Or is Jeff joining you?
I thought Jeff was going to be here, so I should have texted him earlier. I apologize, but I'll go ahead and jump on in. You have attached in front of you the early learning or early literacy plan. There have been a couple of updates with what USBE is expecting this year. They are focused most on math literacy and math goals. So you'll see that's the top of it. And then we, as a district team, including the elementary principals, included a literacy goal for reading below. So in looking at our data and working as a team, we also attend a USBE training for this. We decided that our first goal would be second grade will increase the math composite score. And this is on the Acadiance test that we deliver each year from beginning of year to end of year by 28%. And this is a maintenance goal. You'll see that. That means it's from last year to this year, we're keeping that. What we want to see is that our students are growing from beginning of to the end of year, especially on that Acadiance test. Oh, here's Jeff right here. The second goal is that third grade will increase their math composite score on the Acadiance test, beginning of year to middle of year by 26%. And just seeing, hopefully, we're seeing that growth right at the first of the year in our third grade, really preparing them for their first time taking the RISE test and just really trying to get them ready to go. And then, like I said, we included a literacy goal. And that one, when we looked at the data, and I don't know if you want to jump in really quick and talk a little bit about that, Jeff, or not before I talk about that reading goal.
You can talk about the goal first.
Okay. So San Juan School District will decrease the gap between Native American students and their non-Native peers in reading composite scores in third grade by 10% from 2024, 25 numbers, to 2025, 26 school years.
Now, apologies for being late. I got working and didn't realize what time it was. Anyway, where this goal comes from is we've been working really hard to get our data in a place where we can really look at it by our different groups. And one thing that we noticed is they're starting in first grade, so our racial groups are almost equal leaving kindergarten. But then, starting in first grade, we start to see a gap, and it grows to about third or fourth grade. Then it's about 30% consistent throughout the rest of their time in school. So that's something that we really have talked about as a team that we want to work on. If we see groups of students that aren't being served the way that they need to be, especially when that group of students is 55% of our district, that means that we're really not meeting the needs of the vast majority of our students. We need to make sure that we're doing that. But that's where that comes from. We've been working at getting our data in a place that we can look at it and disaggregate it in ways that give us that information. So that's where that goal comes from, is that work that we've been working with, with getting that data.
Perfect. Yeah. Does the board have any questions or comments?
So can you answer for me? What of these goals was led by state mandates? And what part of it was led by, as you said, Jeff, you know, making it work for our specific school community?
The state mandate is that we have... That we have an early literacy plan and goals. And so they give suggestions for goals. Usually, they're pretty generic. They're... I think if you remember the last few years, we've done composite goals. We want to increase reading composite by X percentage. So the more specific goals related towards the learning achievement gap, those are less about the state mandate and more about what we see as a need for our students.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
How did you come up with the 10% decrease? Is there some kind of correlation? Or you figure, all right, we don't want to make it too high or too low?
Yeah. I think, as we discussed it as a team, we saw that as an achievable goal. We didn't want to set it so high that we couldn't achieve it.
Right, right.
As far as correlation, I think we see about a... That gap increases about 10% in first grade, 10% in second grade, 10% in third grade. So we're... Yeah, and that maintains, so we're hoping to catch it soon.
All right, right. And that's what I was hoping for, as the gap gets smaller. Hopefully, the benchmarks are higher, increases will.
Yeah. And especially, I mean, you say if we decrease it in first grade, then kindergarten, first grade, there's no gap. Second grade, there's 20% gap, and then we should keep bringing it down.
Thank you.
My question would be, can you tell me how that would look in the classroom? I mean, would that mean more books to read at home, more reading logs? I mean, if you can just generalize it, I mean, that would help.
Yeah. So I attended the Utah Rural Schools Conference. There was a big focus on literacy. So some of those things, specific practices to implement in the school setting, is having students read grade-level content often.
Okay.
And not just brief little snippets, but really digging into it. Maybe even similar passages day after day, going back at it and looking at it again. But it's really having that grade-level content not simplified in any way, just attacking it with appropriate supports to help the students reach that ability to read those.
And I know we just adopted that CKLA last year, and that was just only to increase and benefit the student rate.
When you talk about highly engaging but also highly academic content, CKLA is that what I feel.
Okay, good. Perfect, thank you.
Can I add to that just a little bit? One thing that we're working on in the Teaching and Learning Department is we have a goal to highlight a literacy strategy a month that we're going to push those out to teachers so that they know what the literacy strategy is. And then we'll be in the classrooms observing that we're seeing those literacy strategies being used. Because we do see a direct correlation between reading fluency and achievement on standardized tests, which is unfortunately the measure we have to use to say how we're doing. But we do see a correlation between that.
Great. I know with my own children in the school and the classroom, one of the biggest things was timed, being timed reading. That was where we had some of the issue at. So I wonder if we're going to continue with that? Or are we going to lead up into, you know, take a step into?
So that is a state mandate, the timed testing.
Darn it.
So that is part of it. But we definitely want to work on reading fluency. And then I think the CKLA curriculum, what that helps build is contextual fluency. So they learn about, you know, Greek and Roman mythology and all kinds of things which give them context. So when they read, it improves their comprehension.
Okay, great, thank you.
Added to that, I think some of the things that I've heard about CKLA is that students are starting to connect with reading, enjoying it rather than being something they have to do. And when you create a love for reading, the fluency and the timed reading is not as terrifying. Because it can be terrifying. I had a child who hated reading because it was just so stressful. But she loves to read now. So it just, sometimes it takes time, but...
Just a quick story to go along with that. One of my favorite stories as we were adopting CKLA is at Monticello Elementary, they read about World War I in their reading class, and they read about trench warfare. And then Mrs. Alton went out for recess duty, and it had snowed. And the kids were building trenches and using the trench warfare that they had learned about for their snowball fight on the playground. So yeah, it is instilling that love of reading and that love of reading to learn.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for looking out for that.
President Barton, can I just add something? Yeah, so for all the teachers who are listening, when Jeff is speaking about our teaching and learning plans, it's really looking at how do we better support what's happening in the classroom? So that will be coaching, that will be providing resources and those types of things. We are in the process of aligning our plans. So each of our departments has plans, right? So as we're looking at, what is our special ed plan for the year? You know, what is our teaching and learning plan? We're really working to, as part of our system's work, to say, let's align these plans. So we have a focus for literacy is what we're looking at right now. But that's really to help it not be, you've now got to do this, and now you have to do this, and now you have to do that. So really trying to streamline that so teachers are getting the support, no matter which role they play in from which department. And then I also just wanted to give kudos to Jeff as well, as he has created a data dashboard for us. His coding skills and his tech skills have really helped us as we are able, are much more capable of really looking at the data and digging down into the data. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for that work that he's done for us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I do also appreciate the fact that these are not coming across as mandates and heavy-handed. As you said, it's tough being a teacher in the trenches. So support is huge, rather than just do what we say and deal with it. So thank you for that. All right, next item. I think one of you gets to stay and one of you gets to go.
Thank you, Superintendent, for recognizing Jeff. I was going to as well, but it really has been helpful to have him work with that data.
Oh, I do have a question real quick. It was about the LEA being updated for the following school year. Is that something we'll do at the end of the year? Or for the mathematics, sorry?
So is this for the positive behaviors or for the early learning plan?
The early learning plan.
Okay, the early learning plan, yes. You will be receiving an update with as much data as we have at the end of the year on our progress towards these goals. The state has also... I know we have it as an action item, but they have also said that they, because there's no funding attached, the school board doesn't need to approve it anymore. But we can still approve it today, and we will still be required to present these every year and present the update.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is Spencer Singer joining you for this next portion?
Well, we've talked a lot about that, no.
Okay, all right.
He will be taking this over as part of his roles and responsibilities as Director of Special Education Programs and also having some PBIS. But the Positive Behaviors Plan came about as part of legislation from the state. And it isn't necessarily positive behaviors and supports that we think of when we talk about PBIS. This really has to deal with addressing peer pressure, mental health issues, and creating meaningful relationships for our students. They, USBE, when I say they, they did not provide a template for what this plan looks like, but they did provide many requirements in the plan. So we developed a template, and then we also tacked on space at the end for our schools to add what their positive behavior supports are for their school. So that's what you'll see in each of these plans. We do have two schools who are still working on those. That's Monument Valley and then also Monument Valley High School and Monticello High School. But you will see those again in September's board meeting. So we have the rest of our schools, and these would be approved. And these do have a reporting requirement that we will give to you at the end of the school year as well.
And that's San Juan also, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all schools have to have one of these plans in place.
Okay.
And so working through that, some of the suggestions are, what clubs or programs or different initiatives are you already working on in your school that help provide some of these reductions in peer pressure? Or hopefully, meeting the mental health needs of our students or building meaningful relationships? So what are some of the things that are already going on, and how do we do that? There was talk of funding that came with this. I don't believe funding ever came with this. So it's just a plan that we get to write and implement and hopefully better the lives of our students.
I sort of had a question about this. It seems like these kinds of things used to fall under the Student Services Director. Is this related to how we've shifted where the social workers are now under?
Since I came on as Director of Special Education Programs, multi-tiered systems of support was in my purview. And so this, we felt, fell in that realm, and so that's why it stayed in that realm.
So it's tied to that? It already was and it still will be?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think it's good to say that we're also working to de-silo, as you may be seen on the agenda for the admin days, really working on how do we build systems and how do we collaborate systems to work better together? And so I think...
So essentially, it's not compartmentalized either way. It will be under Spencer, but it will also be integrated.
Yeah, we're all helping this lift.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments related to that?
Could you just tell me what you guys, what you saw that could go in the template? Or like, can you just break down?
Sure. Let me hop to a different document real quick.
Because I think a lot of our kids in elementary, they have a better tendency to learn and no behavior traits better, and then gets lost in junior high and then high school. And so I...
Sure, right. Okay, so some of the requirements, and maybe I should just open up one of those. But in here, it really wanted us to look at, go through a process as a school that we assess our needs. Then what are some things that we need to do to build the capacity of our staff to meet these needs of our students? And, you know, we have social workers or school counselors and even our teachers. How do we recognize some of these things and get them to the right people? What is our plan going to be? How will we implement it? And then how are we going to evaluate whether it was successful or not? So we're working on that. We had schools gather data, that's behavior data, referral data, any of those things, and then kind of speak to that within their plan. Some of our schools were doing plans for turnaround efforts, so they already had some data in there. And then they provided some sample questions like, what protective factors are strong among the majority of students in your school?
Okay.
And a protective factor would be like friend groups, clubs, just positive interactions. What protective factors are not as strong? What's something you feel like you're missing that you might want to add? What are the most common concerning behaviors that you see? Is that we're seeing a lot of trauma, so there's a lot of mental health needs? Is there drug use? Is there violence? What risk factors can we most impact right now? And then, are we working to address peer pressure, mental health, and creating meaningful relationships? And is there anything missing that we can add to our plan to help make our school a better place for our students? And then, once we establish that plan, how do we help get students more involved and gain skills to overcome some of those issues? Know what adults to speak with, know what resources are available at the school. And then, again, goes through protective factors. And then, how do we implement that at each school level? It's the administration, is it the PBIS team, is it our school counseling and social work team? What does that look like? And how do we continue those efforts? Once it's developed, how do we keep data on it? And then how do we report that? So there's a reporting section at the end.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, totally.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? This was not a small undertaking.
Yeah, you know, and I'm just kind of, as I was just perusing all the different reports, did you find that there were any major issues in any of the schools that was different from any of the other ones?
I think it's important to recognize that each of our communities are unique and that they come, our students come with their own backgrounds and challenges and benefits from living in their unique communities, right? And so there are some schools and communities who may need more social emotional supports to help with mental health issues that come their way. There may be some communities where drug use is more apparent. So how do we work to make, overcome that and help our families understand that and work through that? Some of our schools may come from areas where, or some of our students may come from areas where our parents aren't as engaged. So how do we work on building that to help those? So I think it's important that, it's not that it's good or bad, it's just unique, and how do we work to meet those unique needs?
I did notice that a common theme was trying to get parents more involved. I, when I looked through them, I think that is a common goal.
And that's nice because that aligns with our strategic plan as well.
Yes.
And majority of the plans also have attendants. You can't, you know, work through this program without having students there. And then the other one that's really common, particularly with our secondary and some upper grade levels, is vaping continues to be something that they're working to prevent.
I did see that.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Will we get San Juan, Monticello, and Monument Valleys?
So three, yes. We will make sure we get them all.
Okay, thank you. It'd just be nice to see what...
It'll, you'll approve what we have tonight, if you're open to that. And then we will bring the others back in September.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll turn the time back over to Superintendent Fitzgerald.
Okay. So the District Teacher and Student Success Act, the TSSA framework, you can see it attached. This is a framework we have approved by the board of how we spend this funding. Each individual school is developing a plan, a TSSA plan, and that also has to be approved by the board. So if we are asking this be approved tonight so schools can move forward with their plans, which we'll bring to you in September. This has been pretty much a similar plan for many years. So I'll just highlight the areas. Our priority one is looking at, we can pay, under this legislation, we can pay up to 25% of our teacher salaries. So you can see that that has been deducted from that total allocation. Our second priority is social emotional support for our students. So this could include school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists could come from this funding. And then priority three is our San Juan Quest Model implementation. The school plans will be based on this implementation plan of the San Juan Quest Model. So they will write that plan in alignment with that when we bring those next month. And we pay a ratio 120 per student based upon October 1 student count. So that's where those allocations per school or those calculations are coming from. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
That total allocation, has that grown much? And I'm just trying to remember the past previous years.
Yeah, it's significantly grown. I think 2018, 2019 was, I want to say, a third of this amount. So we've had significant growth.
I might hit a question. It says, school community council, is this based on their needs or what they're asking? The monies?
So how it's written, it's so that they ask that they try to align with the other plans in the school. So our schools have 90-day plans, they have PBIS plans, they have their school antitrust plans. So the thinking is, let's just not give them another plan. But how do we combine these plans? Typically, schools based upon their allocation are braiding funds. So if they say they feel like they need a reading interventionist, they're going to braid funds maybe from TSSA in their school antitrust plan. So it can help supplement the goals and needs, you know, between plans. What is asked is that they do review it with a school community council and any comments or feedback that they take that into consideration as they write the plan. So that is a requirement as part of the plan.
Okay, I just, the reason why I ask that, and I worry that maybe some of the the school community councils are not asking fully what they need or what's... I mean, they're limiting it to just one specific thing or not realizing or not working towards and adding everything else to it as well, so.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, when you look at school antitrust plans, those are very tight in what they could be used for. You know, it's a very structured program for, you know, for good reasons. I think TSSA, when it was originally rolled out, you know, was thought of as a little bit more flexible for schools and school administrators who felt like they've been in these tight plans that they can't do anything else with, that this funding can give them a little more flexibility to meet the needs of their students specific to their school that maybe wouldn't meet all the rules of some of the other plans that have other purposes.
Okay. Because I want that stress at the SEC meetings that they, if they need to be able to utilize all that they can and to work towards those goals as well. So, I mean, it's not just based on us or the state. It's also on them at the SEC meetings and their officers and so on.
And I think that's been, I think you bring up a really good point, and something we've been working on is how to communicate all of this work that we do with school community councils. So even our updated 90-day plan template, our school improvement template has additions to that for the SEC president to sign off on those. So we are trying to be as proactive as possible as getting that parent input on whatever work we're doing in the building. Because, you know, we are partners with parents, and we need their support as we educate our students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let's...
No, but to your point, though, I'm coming pretty much straight off of the SEC board. And yeah, those are some things in Monument Valley, at least, that our parents are concerned about, of course.
Right.
Yeah, and I do agree with you that this should be talked about a lot.
Right, and it's a question that I ask openly so that our parents that are involved or haven't been involved in SEC yet, they need to know that and understand that this is equally important and that they need to have that involvement and so that they can understand that, you know. Come on, parents, come to the meeting.
That's correct, that's great. I love that.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So I don't know if I'm out of touch on this one, but I do know when this money was originally allocated, it was earmarked for the principal to have a lot of say on how this... And actually, of course, they expected that the principal would coordinate and work and communicate closely. But it actually was money that the administration could put in areas, could braid, as the superintendent has said, but could also find other areas that maybe even beyond the SEC, this, you know, the committee of parents was focusing on. Because that money had to channel in a certain way. This money, like you said, was a little more free. And these priorities, I remember and know, these priorities were set by principals. As far as principal priority one being going into salary, priority two, going into counseling and social work. The principals felt like that was an area that was not getting much support through the monies and the opportunity we had for funding at the time. So they wanted some of this money to be set aside. So keep in mind that it's great that, you know, principals will do well to communicate and work closely with committee. But as I understand it, this is money where administration could take it into their school and try to fill gaps. And it may not be directly involved with the SEC, or it may be.
Well, there's been some changes legislatively, so I'm... Every year, we keep a little bit tightening down a little bit more on this funding.
But they've kind of tightened it.
If you know the history of where this came from, you probably know that well. So it isn't that the... Um, so it isn't that the SCC gets to decide the goals, but they do have to review it, the SCC, um, and, and listen to feedback, so, yeah.
So just to re-stress that, we need to be involved in SCC.
But I, but I do appreciate the comment about principals because oftentimes, they feel like their hands are tied in, whether that's for, you know, providing more cultural events at their school and especially with the JOM funding decreasing. I mean, this is, TSSA funds is a great place that we often see some of those parent events and activities and more culturally related events coming. Has typically been a part of the plans in the past. So it, it is nice to have some flexibility with this funding because that, you know, we know that's an important part of our school communities. And not that reading and math isn't important too, cause that's what we're, they're there for. But I think it's remembering that each school's a little bit different and this funding can help them meet all the needs of their specific community a little more flexibly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and talk about strategic planning updates.
I'm excited because we're going to have some discussions tonight. So, um, we're kind of at a pivotal point with our strategic planning. And we have two groups that are working as part of our strategic plan. We have the design team, which is a small group of district directors that are helping guide the process. We're working with education elements as our consultant. And then we have our larger group, which is a representative of all of our stakeholders. And so, um, Dan is our board member in that group and they've done a lot of work. So we've kind of go back and forth between these two groups. The reason I say we're at a pivotal point is, this is the point, I think, the board, we really need your feedback on if we're headed in the right direction, what other thoughts you have about it. Um, so we can go back first with the design team and then to our next meeting with that larger group. Um, because this is kind of getting to the final stages. So, um, really watch your input tonight. So just as an overview, we have two pillars that we're looking at. Unite and engage and educate and empower. And if you look at the, the attachment, you can see the pillar descriptions and the impact statements. And these have been reviewed with the group, really dug into. This is, even defining this really came from the data, um, from all of our, all of the data that we provided to Ed Elements. They went through it all and kind of came up with, with some ideas and then went back to that larger group. And this is kind of where we ended with that work. So really looking at that definition. And I think it's, you can really look at, you know, how do we know we're successful? It gives you a little bit more into the details of it. So considering those two pillars, the next step that our larger group did, if you'll keep scrolling down, is they came up with some initiatives. And so you can see, um, there are, I believe, five bullet points for unite and engage and then educate and empower. I think we have more. So really, the idea at this point is to narrow this down to say, as we're looking at the work we're doing, what, what is going to be our highest priority, priorities? And, you know, three to five is the max. And this is really looking at three to five years. Um, some of these go together. So you could say, we may combine these into a bigger goal under that pillar and then break that out with, you know, some of multiple bullets that would go over time as we would add that on. And, and honestly, some of this work we're already doing, you know, as soon as we got that feedback, we're like, oh yeah, we need to start working on some of these things, some of those specific comments that came in for us. Um, so really, what I would like is maybe let's start, um, with unite and engage and just kind of have a discussion about what you're thinking about, what we have for the bullet points. Is this the direction? What other thoughts would you like to add as far as these bullet points? Anything you'd like to, to share?
Well, I can just share from, uh, interacting with the various groups. Um, it, we focused mostly on unite and engage, but then we would break out and look at what the educate and empower groups also said. So we, although we integrated in smaller groups, then we expanded into larger groups and shared different ideas and very much, sorry, very much similar themes came out. So we would be talking about things individually and then other people would say, oh yeah, and this. Or what about this or not this? So, um, and, and one of the most common themes is this first bullet, to streamline communication and access to information. Transparency, making sure that people know what's coming up, whether it's calendaring or, um, policies that are being implemented, any of those kinds of things, that we're just very transparent and communicating very well, not just with the community, but especially with the school community so that we're united in what we're trying to accomplish. It's not saying that we have to do all the same things necessarily. It's just saying that we need to know what those common goals are. So, does that make sense? Any other? Anything you want to add to that or?
It's, in Monument Valley, it's always been an issue with trying to get word out. As you know, there's not too many common meeting places. Post office, the clinic, the store. But, uh, whatever, I have noticed though that, you know, with Facebook coming more prevalent and we get more parent using through the outlet, that, um, we are starting to disseminate information and, um, events more, uh, making it more transparent, so. Um, but, you know, I don't know what else we could do to, um, to make the communication a little better.
That's part of why it's a goal, cause it's definitely something we can work on. Yeah.
I know we're always trying to be creative about how, how we can get information out. But, um, right now, I, you know, I'm really at a, at a loss here for trying to get information out, so.
Um, one of the things that we talked about, and Paul Murdock, maybe you could help me a little bit. We discussed possibly creating a template where, uh, um, the school leaders could, could send information into the district. Am I making that up or do?
No, and I'm really trying to remember too.
Yes.
Yes, just a common way to solicit feedback?
Yes.
So that if parents have some way to do that, they know how to do it the same kind of anytime if they wanted to, just a quick and easy way.
Yeah, and I think some of the discussion, you know, with the group and the, the feedback that we got was really about this idea of, you know, you might have a, a student in both the elementary and the high school, but where do you find the same information, right? So even our websites and aligning some of that, we're working on some templates, um, you know, with our website provider that's for like school ant trust and our, you know, school improvement plans, those types of things, so that they're streamlined and easy to find on the website and it can follow a template pattern, which I think also helps our administrators. Um, you know, there, there are a number of things we, we have started on this. We, um, will be providing, um, on the website, there's a new feature, that's a newsletter feature that we've added on to our contract, um, that they have rolled out. Um, a newsletter templates and they're able to do that and communicate in the same way. You know, we've had a lot of work on how we communicate during an emergency. Um, the state just sent out, um, communication protocols for a number of things. So that's super helpful. So I think we're looking at streamlining that, but I agree. I mean, I think as we look at this long-term, you know, we have some ideas and kind of have an idea where to start. But I think when you think about a strategic plan being three to five years, along the way, we still will be having feedback, you know. We might have a good idea and it might not be that great in the end, or it might be fabulous and we can add on to it. But you think of this as, strategic planning isn't just a, a one-stop process. Um, we are trying to, I think this, the goals and the pillars will launch us for the next three to five years. But really, the work we do will continue and we'll be able to come back and even, you know, change whatever we decided in the goals. They, they can be tweaked along, along the way. Um, but really, that's, it's part of the reason these goals are a little more broad is because we can tweak the initiatives that are part of that. You know, if that's a, working on the website or if that's how we communicate, you know, getting feedback from parents or, I mean, all of that could be part of that. And those will be specific, you know, plans that we develop for each of, each school year. So that could look a little different, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, and also, I think with this and also with the educate and empower, we're not trying to add extra work. We're actually trying to simplify things so that people can e- engage and participate, whether it be a parent or a student or an educator or a para, that they know where to go to, you know, how am I supposed to be doing this? Or how do I, who do I reach out to, all those kinds of things. And some of that starts with technology. So, good luck with that, guys.
I like the unite and engage, the whole idea of everything. And it clearly states exactly what we would like to do and that being our goal. Um, and I think we already, I mean, other than updating our website and, you know, continuing to communicate how, how we've been previously, I think one of the biggest, like, not problems, but where we get a little stuck at is where, um, we get feedback. I mean, because, because our website isn't updated, no one's actually really sure where they can get in contact or with who they can get in contact with. Or the response to them and answering their questions or their ideas, it's a little slower than I'm sure, like, any, any parent or any community member would want. So I would, for me, that would be one of my biggest, um, where I would like to see the most improvement. Because essentially, we have our board meetings, we have it on YouTube. I mean, you can click the link and watch it on Facebook if you need to. Um, honestly, there's really no ignorance in finding, um, where you can get this information at because it's everywhere. I've, I've been everywhere. And one of my biggest things that I've noticed being out in the community is, if you have Facebook, you can find all the notifications that do go out. And, um, again, Facebook is one of the biggest places that we, I know if I can't find it on the website for myself or, you know, I, I'm not sure who to ask, I can go to the school's Facebook page and it's listed there. And whether it's the newsletter that's posted and, you know, we can click that link and be able to go back to the school page and, um, look for that information as well. So, uh, that would probably be my biggest, um, input would be how our community members can get that feedback. Because I know there's a lot of questions on TSSA, there's a lot of questions on school community council. And, um, other than them watching here or meeting us in the community and us asking or answering their questions specifically, um, that's where I would say we're probably a little lacking and that would be where we could improve the most, so.
Yeah, education is a, there's enough acronyms to fill a dictionary, right? I, so it is, you know, it is challenging to navigate the education system. So you're right, that is a focus for us is really looking. I appreciate that feedback.
Well, and not only that, looking back on our recommended pillars, I really like that engaging our community because if we know what our community wants and they're able to express that, I mean, we can, um, have academic, academic achievement plus engagement. So I, I really like the pillars and where those are going and the descriptions and impact statements. Um, it would just be on our end and, um, getting follow, follow-up with the community members and so on and so forth. Um, another thing was orientation. I know that was one of the other, um, questions that I've always asked. Um, but who really listens during orientation? But I would, but, you know, that's also very informative on one of the things that, um, our communication goals would be as well, so. I don't know if that's the feedback you're looking for.
Yes, exactly, I'm taking notes, so.
Um, Lucille, did you have anything that you wanted to share related to these plans? The strategic planning and the pillars? Sort of, let's work on that. Can you get a little louder? Sorry, Lucille, we still can't hear you. Okay, we've got you now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to add to, um, add to that, um, about getting word out to our communities is, when I was the liaison at the school, what I found out was through Facebook, my hardest parents to get ahold of was trying to reach out to them was, um, the ones that were working all the time and they come home late, late at night. So, um, when I got on Facebook, I saw a lot of my parents on Facebook and I started, um, chatting with them and I communicated a lot with them on Facebook. And then I made appointments when they were, they were off and stuff like that. So, so that's pretty good. I know that works is, um, getting on Messenger on Facebook and reaching out to the parents. And also, the radio announcement. I hear some other schools just, um, doing weekly announcement, giving everybody updates from the radio station K N V N. Um, that's, that's another way of communicating with parents. Cause a lot of our kids are now with grandparents and majority of our parents that work in group in, you know, nearby, um, towns. So grandparents, uh, listen to the radio and, um, the parents do listen to, like, at a certain time during the day when they're on break. And I know that works too. And on the culturally sustaining part, on the second bullet.
Yes.
Under unite and engage. You know, Navajo Nation Tribal Council passed the native language and culture in December of 2024 to be, um, to have, um, that an official language of the Navajo Nation and to implement all of those, like, within the schools and the Navajo Nation. So, um, I think we need to, um, work on that as well just to honor what was done back there, being that the Nez-Zealad becomes official language on Navajo Nation. So, that's another thing that we really need to. And so I do like that culturally sustaining on the second bullet that we implement more of that into our, um, the Nez-Zealad teachers. And also, like, having more cultural events in our school to implement these things. And, and I know we're being monitored and people look at data. So, um, that's what I would like to compliment on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else had, um, feedback related to these pillars?
Yeah, I really, really commend the work that's been done here by the entire organization, whoever, you know, those that have put the time and effort in. I love it. I think it's, it's very well done and powerful. My thoughts on it are, I'm really excited about it. I really think this is where the board can make a real difference. This, this is where I think we should be thinking about our time that we spend together and our focus. And is it really supporting and helping in any way possible? I mean, if, if, this is on our agenda now in August. If it's not back on our agenda in some way, maybe even in every meeting, I, I wonder if we're not missing a little bit of our vision of what we can do as a board. And I look at this and I think, I look, I read each of these statements and I love them. I think they're powerful, but I do have some questions of what are the next steps? What's that going to look like? What's the timeline? That's work that I think.
And we can keep everyone accountable to make sure those things happen or, or, or get changed as need be or.
We can play a really pivotal role there of saying, you know, let's maybe look at each of these or maybe the superintendent can target which ones to bring to us each meeting with somewhat of an update or somewhat of a asking for input or guidance or, you know, just, just to be a part of supporting the efforts where we can provide resources. Um, but I would love to, in my tenure, to think that these are the things that our efforts and our time didn't, we didn't overlook this. Cause we could easily get totally, I think, saturated with the, the noise and the busyness of what happens in a school district. But I think this is really the, the heartbeat. This is the focus and I like the work that's been done. I just think it's calling now for, you know, I even think of our principals report. Maybe, maybe we should be asking, you know, where, what's happening in your, your school in lines of better communicating with your community? You know, maybe, maybe our questions and our presentations feed more back into this, this work. So that we're really keeping that focus all the time. Anyway, that's my thoughts on it.
Oh, no, I think that's great suggestions and.
I commend the work. I think, I think it's really the work that we need to make sure it doesn't get put down to underneath something. It needs to stay at the top.
Speaking of this specifically, we're working on communication. I'm going to put the, um, technology guys on the spot again. How can we support you when the community comes at you on Facebook because they're frustrated that Aspire isn't working? How can we be proactive about that and make sure that they understand that you're not just.
that you're not just dropping the ball, that's more than just San Juan School District, obviously. It was, but what can we do to help you? Go ahead, Jonathan.
I'm I'm Jonathan English, I'm the Data and Information System Manager for the district. Yeah, I really feel, I was out of the office yesterday, sorry, picked a bad day to to go out of the office. It um I could have supported Aspire a little bit better if I'd have been on premise. But uh for uh for years, I've wondered um if we couldn't do a better job monitoring. So from a data and tech standpoint, uh there's something called just uptime or available time, like how available are our systems? And most tech companies measure it in what what we call nines, which is the number of nines after ninety-nine that you are, that your systems were available. And uh we we've never really had that practice at at the San Juan School District. Like uh the systems that I support, like Aspire is the most public facing, but there's other, there's the the UKG system and the LINK system and and other systems. Like how available are those? And could we be served with, I I just feel like we could be served if we established some metrics and said uh and and actually measured our performance, established a baseline. I I know you're asking, perhaps, I'm guessing that you're asking about a specific incident, right? Like yesterday, really bad timing, why is Aspire down? I'm looking at it more from like.
A holistic, yes, systems, which is great.
And I and I'm looking at systemically, what are the issues? And and how can we address them on a larger window? Establish a baseline and figuring out what are the things that cause our systems to go down? That cause our, uh if it happens during an instructional day, you know, there's valuable instruction, instructional time that can be lost through technology downtime. So, sorry, that was random comments just from a guy.
Well, I didn't give you a lot of time and also I think, I mean, I'm just using it as an example where if we have a system in place where something goes down, but we're still able to communicate to the community, hey, this is being dealt with so that they're not just ranting to each other about it. Does that make sense? Where if we create a structure where even though we can't predict what's gonna happen, we can automatically have something that goes out that says, hey, we're we're on this. It was sent to district employees, but you know, something like that for the public. I'm not saying you have to do that, I'm just saying, is that something we could be thinking about? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I will stop commenting unless, because I will comment forever, but.
Okay.
You mentioned Facebook, but.
I'm not saying it has to be Facebook, but you, that's where people were complaining.
My my question as Facebook was brought up is uh really, who is, do we have for each individual organization, including the district office as a whole? Who is this Facebook liaison?
Yeah.
Like, because we could have posted to Facebook yesterday, I don't know if we did or.
I don't know either.
But we could have, we could have posted that on the district feed. But we don't always think about it and I'm not sure there's a designated person. If Facebook is such a public square, and I believe that it is, then maybe it's worth designating someone as a Facebook liaison and and being like, please post, post, keep our social media feeds up to date.
Yeah, again, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just saying, looking at these plans, is that something that we can implement in the future?
And I can address that. So I think the challenge becomes, right now, parents are upset that it went down because it's registration, right? This is a peak time of the year where all of our parents are gonna have to get in and do things to be registered for the school. So I think that looks a little different than, you know, a month from now, if Aspire goes down, we may have one parent who is trying to get on it and look at something, right? So I would say for how often and how many systems we have and how many programs, digital programs we're running, that could be really burdensome to try to keep the public informed when it may not even affect the majority of of people most of the time. So what I really appreciate from our tech department is when it is down, whether it's, no matter what program it is, they send out an email to the district staff or those who are being, you know, impacted by it, so they know immediately that there's a problem and that someone is working on it. Because I think the biggest frustration comes from the school site, where they don't know what's going on, they don't have something that they need. So I, to me, that's the most important first step. Um and then the school can communicate with any parent, you know, so if a parent is trying to get registered, they can't get on, then that would be the school's responsibility. I would expect that the parent would call the school and they'd be like, this is our system that's down, we're working on it and get it back up. So that's kind of how communication um has worked. I think it would be difficult to to do that.
That's okay, I wasn't saying that something needs to change. I'm just saying, using a real life thing to try to look at how we would possibly make some changes, so. And again, I think you guys do great work, I know that you have a lot that you have to do, especially this time of year. Well, and just to add to that, I think that us having this discussion openly, like Ron said as well, I mean, if we continue to have this every month or, you know, something arises that we can discuss this, that also leads into the transparency that we're um that we want to achieve and to let our community know, communities and our parents and everybody else know that this is what we're actively working on. And so maybe somebody has an idea that we haven't uncovered yet or, you know, we can compact it into something a little more easier. So I I mean, I think we're just in the benefit parts of it. And even if it is in the sense vague, at least we can, you know, compartmentalize everywhere out and redefine things as we go along within the three to five um year goal that we're asked of. So um let the discussions continue.
I'm just wondering if there's any additional comments on, we talked quite a bit about unite and engage, but educate and empower, if anyone has any additional comments, feedback that I can take back to the team.
I guess I would ask, because I wasn't as involved in this particular pillar, was there a lot of buy-in with the idea of implementing a process for district-wide academic goal setting? Or is that something that's still gonna be a little bit of a challenge?
There there may be some challenge with, I think what we heard a little bit about the plans with really looking at systems, taking away silos, really, you know, that idea of emergence, we're working together. I think there's also this idea that with a strategic plan, this is a bottom-up, right? We're not saying the district office is gonna determine these these goals and then everyone else has to align their plans to them. We're really flipping that and saying, what are the goals in ninety-day plans? What are the special education goals that are happening in all of our buildings? Um, you know, what are in the TSSA plan? So really flipping it to say, what are we seeing across the district? And, you know, the data dashboard that I referenced earlier really is helping us from the central office to really get a better handle on what that looks like across the district. In the past, it's very difficult to get a district view on certain data points. So now we we're overcoming that challenge. So I think it's this idea that, yes, there there can be alignment. Um, I think it works better when there is some alignment uh because we're not all working towards all these hundred goals at each school. So that is something that we work for and I'm excited about that part of it. I think the work we're doing this year and moving forward. But again, that's what we've reiterated with our teams at the schools is that it it's a bottom-up, right? Like, we have commonalities between the schools of needs and we can meet those needs maybe in different ways or the level of that may need may be different. But there is definitely um us working on that that can come from a district viewpoint.
Well, and also speaking on that particular bullet, um it's a process. It's district, it's a district-wide goal-setting process, but it's for each individual student in collaboration with the community, the educators, the parents, the family. So that that's a lofty goal, but but I do see the value in it because that is what we're about, is each individual student.
And I think that's why you look at, this is a three to five-year process, right? Like, will we get to a hundred percent? Well, I sure hope so. But we can work on it and we can improve. I mean, that's what we do every day in education, that's what we ask our students to do every day is improve. So as we think about that particular goal, yes, it is very lofty, but we can, and and I fully believe in our our San Juan School District team. I mean, everyone's invested, everyone is willing to put in what they can for the individual student. So I think that's what we're all about. So this is just really getting a better alignment and a better way to monitor um and have the school board lead out on this. Like, I I appreciate the comment from Board Member Nielsen and what he said there. I think that's, you know, us, by what the board does each month in board meeting, that's communicated to everyone in our building, so I think that's really important.
I did have a question, students on the bullet, students will complete a yearly cross-curricular project that actually works on private community, what does that look like?
So that came from one of the subgroups working in our team, really thinking about, and and there's been quite a bit of discussion at the state level as well as, you know, service projects and that that type of service work. I think really what it's getting down to with that line, and and I'm guessing it's probably gonna get tweaked some more, but I think it's really thinking about, how do we make the educational experience relevant for students? So that they're not just learning, I mean, I I love the the little antidote from uh Monticello Elementary with, you know, they're learning about trench warfare and then they had a hands-on activity they created to go with it. So I think it's that idea that for our students, um we know this in the research, that relevancy is an important part of understanding, the contextual understanding, understanding how to apply those skills. We don't want students just to get that basic, I can spit you back a fact. I mean, with all the technology we have, that I don't know how much is that gonna help them in the future? But what do I do with that information? What do I do that I care about as an individual with that information that is interesting to me? So I think that really that that bullet is really about relevancy for students, making it relevant and applicable.
I think there's also a mental health component to that. Being being able to be tied into a community because our society is so much getting um compartmentalized and isolated and bringing the community back into the education experience is, it's, it's a good thing. I think it can be when it works. Anything else? Sorry, we just have a lot of time because we don't have a presentation, so I'm like, let's just talk. Yeah, so really, if if anybody had anything else they wanted to share regarding any of this, it was a good time.
Well, you know, Ron, I think what you said about perhaps, and and this is a a living document that will go through some transitions and changes, to get the feedback from the um school, the principals, vice principals, and maybe even the the teachers, um their feedback is very important. As well as the SCC, you know, I I really believe that um we can get some good feedback from from our parents about some of the um programs that we might have not heard of. Maybe students or parents from other locations move here and have other better ideas that work at different school districts, you know, that they came from. But to have this more um available or or um have more people's input and get more data, I think that's important, so moving forward.
Can I highlight one thing? I mean, a lot of this is stuff, as you said Superintendent Fitzgerald, that we're already doing. We will enhance the physical and social environments of our schools to ensure all students feel safe, respected and valued. And we're gonna be talking about some of those things as far as capital, things that we're doing later today. So I I think, I think we are doing good things regarding safe schools and I'm excited about it. And also, um enhanced environments where kids will want to be, where they're not in a dark room, you know, that's scary or whatever, you know. I I think we're doing good things where we can, within what we have, so. Um with that, if we don't have any other comments, um I think let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is um out-of-state transfer students. And just a brief, you know.
Yeah, this will be a pretty brief because it is an action item, but just wanted the opportunity for discussion if needed. So USBE um did pass that our students that are living along the Arizona border, that are right there by the border, um they will be paying um the WPU for those students. So that's a big change. When we consider that policy, um what we've asked is that they still complete um the the tran, student transfer form that was approved by the board um because there's a variety of reasons why, but we still want them to do that. Um because it still allows us to have the conversation, is are are you living now with another family member that is in Utah? So we can have correct um addresses for that. And then our students, we still have out-of-state students that are coming from Colorado. So the particular students, you can see that's attached today, um which we won't talk about, it's confidential. But it is on there if you have any questions in particular. Um the student is related to a teacher and does, that is why they're specifically, they have already been attending our schools.
Could this be covered with the WPU?
It would not.
And one other follow-up question, so if, I agree, we, I like the idea that we continue to do the applications, that would also allow us to make a determination, there might be a case where we don't approve, correct, based on maybe behavioral or some other type of.
Yes, that, and that's part of the reason we're doing that.
Rationale behind.
Yes, and and if the board would like those to still come for approval, I mean, in the policy, it's to waive tuition. But if the board would like those still to come to the board, you know, that is something we could do. Um right now, I've asked the school principals to work with me directly as a superintendent for those. But if you feel like you'd still like them to come to the board, I'm happy to to have them on here.
Okay, that's something for us to think about. I I don't know if we want any other discussion related to that right now, it's obviously not an action item. So we can, as far, as far as the idea of bringing the others, but we can, we can talk about it. Any other questions or comments related to that?
And you just said the WPU would apply to the Arizona border students, right?
Yes, and and I think particularly what they're looking at is Navajo Nation. So because of how land and land leases, and I mean, we literally have a home that's split in half by the state line, so it is complicated. So I think to honor, you know, the education and funding for those students that are needed, that is why they made that decision.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to turn some time over to our new business administrator.
Yes, all right, so first, just some updates on the progress for Blanning Elementary. I guess before I get into that too much, I just wanted to report that we did have an appraiser come out sometime in July. It was a few weeks back to start the appraisal process for the old school um so we can have some guidance on on what the next steps will be for for the old school there. And his name is Gordon Low, we're just waiting to hear back from him on what the the next steps will be for that. Um and then as far as the new Blanning Elementary, if we, if someone could open up that PowerPoint there.
She said we haven't received any information back on.
We have not, he's he's come down to the school, he he walked to the school with myself and with Tyrell and with uh with the, I can't remember if the principal was there or not, but but we did a little walk-through there and, uh, you know, he said that he'd get back with with us on his official report. So we're just waiting to hear from him and when we have that information, we can present it to the board. Um with the new school, uh just a couple of things to point out. Um and we could probably just go to the slide there with the um with the PowerPoint or with the, excuse me, the drone video. So a few things to point out just as this, uh, the video goes here, hopefully. I guess while that's getting pulled up here too, I can just say some of the things that are having on, happening on the interior. Uh we've we've received the carpet and they're gonna start laying some of that carpet um in the next few days here. Pointing out some of the exterior stuff here, we have had report that the veneer is one hundred percent complete on the exterior uh for the stone veneer. Um again, the carpeting has arrived and will be installed in certain areas and certain classrooms on the C wing in the next several weeks here. A lot of the concrete work is starting on the exterior, the site concrete. Um and a good chunk of that will be done in the next month or so. The tile work for the walls in the corridor and the C wing and in the B wing have begun. They're making great progress on that as well. Um there's been some progress in the bathrooms there in the front and the corridors. Toilets have gone in, tile work has been put in for there and there's gonna be a picture associated with that at the end of this. Um but then we can just watch the drone video, as you can see, they've started the digging and now there's some concrete getting poured and some of the site work there. The stone veneers have been put in, um there's some more of the site work back there. Uh I I believe most of the roof work is, has been completed at this point with all the the units on top there. And you'll see as we get to the back here, they've started out uh the areas for for some of the stone concrete that will be put in just in the the middle of these three wings. the stone concrete that will be put in just in the middle of these three wings, or these wings here, and so they'll start on the concrete with that shortly as well. Again, the veneers are 100% completed there. Yeah, they're making great progress. The exterior looks great there.
What was the decision with the collection pool out in front?
So that is, that's an ongoing issue that we're still kind of working out. One of the options that we've talked about, we've just looked at several of the price points that they've given us, and not a lot of them have made sense for what we believe the amount of work that's going to be put into it. And so we're still thinking about some of the options that we're going with that. One of the possibilities is that they'll put in some of the drain work that needs to go in there, that's going to be essential to get it up to code, but then after completion date, we could look at the possibility of having some contractors in the area take some of the draft designs that were given to us and finish the project outside of Westland. But that's, you know, we're still exploring some of those options, just to make it work as far as the numbers go. But other things, you know, I already mentioned that some of the tile work has been put in, the carpet, they've received all the carpet and that's going to be starting to put in the next couple of weeks here. The sheet rock and skylight for the heritage language, or the heritage language room have been put in. Interior framing is 100% complete, exterior stone veneer is 100% complete, and we're happy to report that production is ahead of schedule. And if you wouldn't mind pulling up if they want to look at, yeah, here's one of the bathrooms here, as you can see, the tile work has been put in here, they've installed some of those sinks and the toilets in there, and I believe that they began working on some of the tile work in this room as well, in this bathroom. And this isn't one of the corridors, I believe. And then if you wouldn't mind going to the next picture of the heritage and language room. So again, the framing in here is done, they have the skylight up at the very top.
Was that something that was added after, or is that something that was part of the plans?
I believe it was part of the plans, yeah.
It does add good light to that.
It does, yeah. Yeah, it's coming along great. Again, we haven't changed the substantial completion dates or the final completion dates, but they are saying that at the moment they are ahead of schedule, which is great news.
I was gonna, I have heard that multiple times from people that we're ahead of schedule, so it's nice to be ahead of schedule because there's always something that comes up towards the end.
For sure.
So.
Any questions on the Blanding Elementary?
Maybe we'll make a visit next month.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind going saying again.
How often does this staff, do you know? I know they've visited a few times.
As in the Blanding Elementary School? I believe they visited at the end of the school year last year, and we've scheduled for them, they're going to visit it in a week from today. Yeah, we've talked to Mason over there and we're going to do a walk-through with the principal and some of the teachers, just after-school hours that, you know, whoever wants to come down and walk through with us can.
So that's next Tuesday?
Yes, a week from today, yeah. And, you know, I guess another thing that I forgot to mention, you know, we've, we're going to be working with the principal to decide what furniture can be moved over from the old elementary school to be put into the new one, and then that'll help us to decide what furniture is needed as far as new furniture goes for the new school.
And did you say how much of the flooring was completed? You said they laid carpet down, are we just doing carpet or tile work or?
So we've got all the concrete laid, obviously, but we haven't started. I believe they said that they're going to start sometime this week to put the carpet down in a few of the classrooms. I think that's going to just be something that happens over the next several months, but there in that C wing, they said that they're going to start getting some of the carpet laid down in there.
And the, all the exterior, it's closed off right now?
It is securely, it's not enclosed necessarily with the veneer, the stone on there, but it is, you know, there's the C wing and the B wing are closed off, they're supposed to be clean areas at the moment, so they can start doing some of that carpeting work in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments related to that? And so are we, we're hopeful that we'll hear back on the appraisal so that we can?
Yeah.
You will update us when we know about, more about that, okay.
And are we hopeful that we're going to have a lot of the furniture from the old elementary come here, or are we kind of just wait and see until we get to that point?
I know Principal Johnson is going to be working on some of the, they have a lot of new furniture from what I've been told, and it just makes sense to have some of that moved over. You know, I think outside of the furniture that's a little bit newer, they'll probably want to get more new furniture in there, and so he's going to be working on an inventory of what furniture some of the faculty and staff would like to be moved over from the old elementary into the new elementary. And so I believe that we talked with him about that just a week ago, and he said that he would work on getting us an inventory for that.
Okay, and they'll be able to see exactly once they go through the tour again, what?
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's part of the purpose for the tour is so they can, they can see what they're going to be working with and what furniture they might want in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments related to that? Okay, let's talk about some other capital projects.
So if you might have noticed, we've started, Triar's construction has started, the demolition process for San Juan High School and for Montezuma Creek Elementary School. One of the questions that might come up is, as I'm sure a lot of you are aware, there's construction going on near the Montezuma Creek area. We do have a plan in place for parent and student drop-off, the parent pickup and drop-off area, they said will remain open for parents and to be able to drop off and pick up their students there. You know, unfortunately, a lot of the construction issues are out of our hands. You know, I know that Conan and the transportation crew are working hard to make sure that we are going to be able to get students to and from school on time, but we'll have to work with some of those punches as they come. We were told that the roundabout area in Montezuma Creek should be completed by mid-September. Hopefully, that's still accurate, and hopefully they're able to get that finished. As far as the projects go though for Montezuma Creek Elementary and San Juan High School, again, they are underway. We do have substantial completion dates that have been provided by Triar's and by our architect. For Montezuma Creek Elementary School, our estimated substantial completion date is October 22nd, 2025, and the estimated final completion date for that is November 21st, 2025. For San Juan High School, the estimated substantial completion date is January 15th, 2026, with the estimated final completion date being February 16th, 2026. Again, demolition's ongoing, they're just getting down into, to see kind of what the bones look like there. I know they've run into some, not issues, but some things they weren't expecting, and so some of that demo is going just slightly slower than they had expected, but I think that we're running along smoothly now. I guess just one of the things that comes with the demolition here for San Juan High School, they are doing some necessary work in the area that has been used for distance education, so that has been moved from those temporarily into the conference building or the old seminary building here, just across the street there. We're hoping that the work that needs to be done in those rooms will be completed in the next few months, so we can get them back into their regular classrooms for that in the next few months, you know, as they're working on demolition, as they get started going on the substantial portion of the project, we know we want to include some pictures and stuff, so everyone can see the progress for both of those schools.
Any questions?
And we didn't have to stray from any of the plans that we had been brought up earlier by.
For the vestibules?
Oh, yeah.
So far not, you know, not that I'm aware of. I also forgot to mention, I apologize. So that's the demolition that we've got going on, but we are also in the drafting process for the vestibules for Albert R. Lyman and for Monticello High School, so.
Did we have a timeframe for that?
We're going to start just after school ends next summer, so that we can try to limit the amount of time that they're going to be out there during the school year.
I might add onto that too, that you all received, Jacob will bring back the final plans once those are done, and we'll let you all know on the timelines as far as when those will be out on the street for bidding, because we'll put them much earlier in the summer so that we can get rolling on those projects and have ample time to get it all done, so.
For sure.
Right now, MHTN's plan to have the final documents completed is, I think, November, December, I think they're around December, so we can put it on the street.
So we can have plenty of time for bidding, yeah. Thanks, Tyrell.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if that applies to the capital follow-up, but for the roundabout in Montezuma Creek, that after, once the roundabout's done, we shouldn't have too much hindrance with transportation, right?
Just that the, that they still have the ongoing construction on the road that leads out, yeah. But, you know, as far as in and around the high school goes, I wouldn't imagine that there would be.
Yeah, I think it will impact our routes, so just the time to get to school, just by, until they complete that project, I think that will be ongoing, depending on where you live, at which time you'll be impacted by that. But, I mean, we, you know, in meeting with Conan this week, you know, we are expecting some longer-term, just maybe rotating around longer bus routes, depending on which route they're coming in on.
Question from Anna from, okay, correct me, so, okay, thank you.
So we are being proactive, obviously, with that, it's ongoing, as you said.
Yeah, to the extent that we have within our power, yeah, we're trying, you know, Conan mentioned that as far as the pickup goes for the students on those bus routes, I think they're going to try and start a little bit earlier without being, you know, excessive, understanding that there's still young students that are going to be on those routes, but, yeah, I think that they do have a plan in place to try and beat some of the construction traffic.
And he's communicating with him regularly to get updates and to express our concerns and anything we can do to mitigate that. I appreciate all the patience from our staff and our parent and community, parents and community members, because it is a very frustrating situation even to get from one school to the other, so it's something out of our control, but we're doing the best we can.
And being able to communicate to the parents of what's going on with the delays or they have to leave early or anything like that. Okay, thank you.
All right, this is unusual. That is a good idea, let's go ahead and do that now. There is a need to go into closed session regarding litigation, so at this time, I would just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for litigation purposes.
I'll second.
Any discussion related to that? Okay, roll call.
Ron Nielsen, yes.
Colleen Manelli, yes. Nan Barton, yes.
Don Woes, yes.
Go ahead, Lucille.
Lucille Cody, yes.
Thank you. All right, we will go into closed session, and then after that, we will have our meal break.
Is this a crazy call?
Yeah, right. Yeah, he's, over the years, except he's a tutor, he's like all the stuff.
Yeah, I have a chance.
I have all the classes here, that are, he's got a personal mind, he's like, unless you were a bunch of, he's a teacher. Yeah, he's, he's a, I think he, he's one of your two. He's lost it very easily.
I know. I know.
Okay, welcome back to our San Juan School District Board meeting. I, it appears we don't have any public comments at this time, so we'll go ahead and jump right to the San Juan Sweet Job Award, and so could I get Tyrell Pemberton to come up?
Oh, we didn't move the chair.
Yeah, let's turn that around. Oh, we didn't move the chair. I'm going to do something a little bit unusual and actually invite the rest of the board to come up and stand with me.
I've been told I'm not allowed to read the comments, but nobody said I couldn't make my own comments. Just want to say thank you, Tyrell. You have been so good for our district, and I know that it's time right now for you to be good for yourself and your family, but we are so grateful for all that you have done for us, and I couldn't even possibly name all the things, but just for me personally, coming in on the board suddenly in January when we did that a couple of years ago, was kind of a rough transition for me, but you were one of the people that just welcomed me and made me think that this is something that I could do after all, so thank you for that, and like I said, thank you for all that you do for all of San Juan School District, and even in the background, we hope to still hear from you a little bit and keep us on track.
Your parents, parents, so.
Yeah.
They laid out for you earlier.
Thank you again. We're sad to see you go, but we, we're grateful for everything, so.
And you can read these comments to yourself.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes. You can either move that away. All right, ready, one, two, three.
Okay, now we get to you.
Thank you all. Thanks. Thank you. Been a couple of months. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, we're good. See you later. All right, moving on, the, the next thing on our agenda is looking at the consent agenda, so at this time, I'm just going to check and make sure that I'm on the right track. At this time, if we have any discussion related to that, I'm open to comments. Okay, so I would just ask for a motion regarding that.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second. All in favor? Oh, you have a comment?
Oh, no, I was going to say.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Lucille? It's okay, it passes. Yes. All right, so we move on to possible action items. If you look in your agenda, kind of helps, sometimes we have a hard time figuring out how to word the motion, so I'm just directing you to that area of the online agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve San Juan School District 2025-2026 Early Learning Plan.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion related to that? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the next item is the San Juan School District PBIS Substance Abuse Prevention for 2025-2026.
I move to approve the 2025-2026 San Juan School District PBIS Prevention Use Plans.
I will second them.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The 2025-2026 San Juan School District TSSA Framework. Okay. It's your turn, Dawn. I'm not saying you have to, but.
Oh, no.
Yeah, number three.
I would like to motion to move the... okay, yeah, the 2025-2026 San Juan School District TSSA Framework.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes, and out-of-state transfer students.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed out-of-state transfer student for 2025-2026.
Yeah, the one that we have on today, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We'll go ahead and discuss the information items now.
Okay, next board meeting will be September 23rd, remember it's later in the month because of conflicts of other meetings. And then our first day of school is August 13th. CCR Day will be a half-day on September 9th, so students will attend half the day. And then NAFIS Conference is September 14th through 16th in Washington DC. And our USBA Leadership Academy is September 25th through 27th, so if you're interested in attending that, please contact President Pardon.
Are you attending NAFIS?
Yes, we are planning on it, we both have. Jacob has a baby on the way, I have a grandbaby on the way, so we're trying to work through that.
While I'm in DC.
Yeah, we both don't want to be stuck in DC while babies are being born.
Yeah, right.
And, yeah, the USBA Leadership Academy is September 25th through 27th, and again, just reach out to me if you. I have already expressed that I intend to attend that, so. We have space to take others as well, so we invite you, if you can, make that fit in your schedule. I think that does it, so we are adjourned, thank you.